Well, do and the recording is starting, so you can start the meeting whenever you like.
Thank you. Just gonna get up a second copy of the agenda. Okay. Call the meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Goodwood Board of Supervisors committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska statutes 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. Goodwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Goodwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I am, we'll go through roll call and any disclosures. So I am Mike Edgington, co-chair and land use supervisor. And let's say Brianna next.
Brianna Sullivan, co-chair, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor.
Thank you. Amanda?
Amanda Sassy, Road Supervisor.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Jennifer Wingard, Public Safety.
Thank you, Guy.
Guy Wade, Fire Department.
Thank you. Does anyone have any disclosures for tonight? Okay, I'm not hearing any.
I would like to disclose, if I can.
Yeah, please go ahead.
That I was on the subcommittee, the Trails Subcommittee Master Plan Subcommittee Committee. And I was a part of that, so that's my disclosure.
Okay, thank you. I think plenty of people have been involved in the Trails Plan at various stages, so we would rule that is not a conflict. Or not a substantial conflict. Again, if there's no disagreement, we will move on. So CK motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to approve.
Thank you.
Brianna, I'd like to amend the agenda and approve her motion.
So do you want to second it and then move an amendment?
Yes, second the move and amend.
Okay, what's the amendment?
I'd like to postpone the Trails item for discussion in February because we got pretty far last time. And there's been a meeting since then. And there'll be another one before February.
Okay, I think the way we probably do that is to keep it on the agenda as is, and when we come to that item, you can immediately move to postpone.
Okay.
Probably makes more sense than changing the agenda.
Got it.
Actually, can I, I have one potential change as well. Can I? Are you, sorry, let's take a step back. So I think that doesn't need an amendment, but if you want to continue with the amendment, you can. Or do you want to withdraw it?
I'll withdraw it.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer?
Actually, I have a question about that. Because I would be interested in something similar, but I'd like to know if we can just remove it from now, for now, because I, it went on as an update and then turned into something a little more in depth. And so I guess I don't see a reason to have it on. I guess I'm not seeing the reason to have it on next month's agenda either unless Trails asks us to.
So we can discuss it, we can postpone it for longer or postpone it indefinitely or postpone it until a later date and then change, you know, that later date, just push it off forever.
Okay, and you don't think, and we don't need a motion for that?
Well, when we come to the item, we do.
Okay, all right, understood. Okay.
Okay, the, I would like to make an amendment, so can I hand over the chair to Brianna, please?
Yes, I have the chair. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, thanks. The, the HLB five year, well, one year and five year plan is going to be up for public hearing in March. We haven't got a definite date for that, although it's probably going to be, it may be either just before or just after our March GBOS meeting. So I'd like to put that onto new business tonight so we can discuss it properly in February in case the public hearing is before our March GBOS meeting. So I'd move to amend the agenda to include item four and a half. You know, introduce discussion about HLB five-year plan.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have an amended agenda and we can do a voice vote unless we need to discuss it first. Jennifer, is your hand up?
Yes, actually, I'm just having slight technical difficulties and I'm hoping that we can scroll down on the, I don't have another device right now, so if we could scroll down on the agenda so I could see what, that would be great. That's it. Okay.
Yeah?
Yes.
So we put it at four and a half on new business.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, can we do that for everyone in favor? Say aye.
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 Okay, that passes unanimously and we'll give you back the chair, Mike.
Okay, thank that. Actually, can you just do the, can you pass the agenda, agenda as approved as well? So you can finish off the item?
Yes.
Thanks. I'll hand it back.
So we have amended agenda for approval and do we need to say aye again for that then? Kyle?
Yes, and I recommend asking for any nays too.
Okay, are there any objections? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you, everyone. There you go, Mike.
Thank you. Announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand away to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. GBOS committees, Trails, Land Use, Public Safety and Cemetery will hold officer elections or did hold officer elections at their first regular meetings in 2022. Election for GBOS CC will be on the ballot in April. Filing period is January the 14th or to January 31st with, I believe, the municipal clerk. The HLB Draft 2022 Annual Work Program and Five-Year Management Plan is now available on that link. There is a redlined version and we'll be discussing that later this evening. This is covering the items which we did not cover on the January 17th meeting. Okay. So we will move on to old business. Topic number one, discussion status of Goodwood Trails Master Plan. Brianna?
I'd like to postpone this discussion until February regular meeting.
Okay, are there any, is there a second? Jennifer, do you have comment or?
Well.
Please go ahead, Jennifer.
Yes, if, no, I'll wait to see if this gets seconded.
I'll second it. This is Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. So we discussed the motion, Jennifer?
Yeah, I, as I mentioned before, I'd really like to take it off our agenda unless we have a reason to put it on. I think we accidentally ended up stretching the definition of update and I'd be, I would be happy to hear from Trails, but the way we're doing updates with all of our other subcommittees, we don't end up in their parliamentary discussions, which is kind of what happened last time. So just to be clear that it's, it's their business until it becomes our business. I know that ultimately we are responsible for this Trails document as representatives of the Goodwood community that paid for it, but I'd like to see if Trails can work their stuff out first.
Brianna, do you, is your hand up?
Oops, sorry.
Okay, so are you, so we have the motion in front of us to postpone it to next month. Are you proposing an amendment to that motion, Jennifer?
Yes, please. I would move that we postpone it indefinitely.
Okay. Do I hear a second to the amendment?
This is Brianna. I'm happy to second it if I'm allowed to.
Yeah, okay. So does anyone want to discuss the, let me comment on the amendment to postpone indefinitely? Guy?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So if there is action on it, this, it will come back up to new business and old business again, and then if there's action needed, then we can take it at that point that this doesn't forfeit it coming in front of our board again, right?
My understanding is what we, what we discuss, what was on the agenda, what we started discussing last meeting was the current status of the Trails Master Plan. So if we postpone this, we're not going to be talking about the current status, but any other actions or motions or anything else to do with the Trails Master Plan can still be introduced on the agenda and discussed. So this is really just killing off this specific discussion that we started last week.
Sure, yeah, no, I thought, I think we spent an hour on it and I, then they had the Trails Committee meeting and I, there's probably enough of discussion at that point, but if there is an action item that comes back up, yeah. That doesn't kill that, then I agree with it.
That's my understanding of what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer?
Oops, sorry.
It's okay, so I don't see any more comments, so can we have a roll call on the amendment, please? Kyle?
Yes, Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy.
Yes.
Guy Wade.
Yes.
The amendment passes by.
Thank you. So the the amended motion is basically exactly the same as the amendment, so we just formally go through this again to to postpone indefinitely. Any discussion? Okay, can you go through roll call, please, Kyle?
Yes, Mike Edgington.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Amanda Sassy.
Yes.
Guy Wade.
Yes.
The amended, the motion as amended passes by zero.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to new business, item number two, permitting for Goodwood Forest Fair 2022. And Karen Zakara is listed. I don't see Karen on. Is somebody else able to speak to this?
Probably Tommy, Tommy.
Oh, Tommy, yes. Are you able to speak to this, Tommy?
I've been muted, Tommy. Get your mute on.
Okay.
Thank you, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Karen is the Minister of Paperwork and I'm her second retired. As you, you can hear, okay. Yes?
Yes.
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, all right. Some people don't know that it takes about four months to get all the permits, procedures, contracts ready to put on the forest fair. And so really we, and there's a list of 27 different things that you have to do before we bring it to the Board of Supervisors for their permitting overall. And Karen has gotten started on this. And we are going ahead with the Forest Fair. And we wanted to let you know that the intention is to put on a safe and fun fair this year. I can answer any questions.
Thanks, Tommy. I don't see any questions. I have a quick one. Do you, do you know if there are going to be any extra, is there extra paperwork to go through this year? The, the Muni or the state imposes?
Nothing as far as COVID, which I, you're probably alluding to.
Yeah.
In the past, last year, there was the the specter of the municipality either not allowing events or requiring masks for events. But on the books now, there's nothing like that. But I'm sure there will be new requirements or permits or hoops to jump through. And we're ready. We're, we've been doing exercises all winter for hoop jumping.
Thanks, Tommy. Jennifer?
Yeah. Hey, Tommy, I just wanted to say that I know many of us really appreciate the work that the Forest Fair Committee has done to keep the whole community safe in the last two years, and I am super excited to see Forest Fair return. So thank you to everyone. I know these decisions have been hard every year.
If I might say that we've we're leading from, no one wants to, let's say, no one wants to be the mask police, but there will be plenty of placards up to encourage people to be responsible to themselves and to the community by wearing a mask. There will be a million masks available for free. We are having more hand washing stations than are required. We're having hand sanitizer and maybe even straws to drink beer through, although that's an anathema to a lot of beer drinkers. We're, we're also considering moving all the food booths to one area so that people who are not masked can eat in, in a certain area. But I think it's time to rely on people's sense of responsibility to, to gather together. And I think the community, Goodwood community, needs to have a get together and all the Forest Fair, fairies will be wearing masks as a, a model of behavior.
Thank you, Tommy. Brianna?
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Karen and Tommy and all of your board for months and months of work also. I had a quick question on the date. Is it the first weekend in July or the second weekend?
The second, it follows, 4th of July is on a Monday this year, and it will be the following weekend, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board or the community?
We, we will report monthly or as needed on the progress that we're making or if other things come up or, you know, what bands, your favorite bands are playing or whatever. We're really looking forward to gathering the community together. In the past, there have been up to 300 volunteers that make the Forest Fair happen. And it's, it's hard work and everybody works for free, but it's also a community building activity. The information booth is all regulars, the usual suspects who get to get together and tell people where to go. And I think our community needs that. And we're going to be as safe as we can be.
Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
As a, as a, I think I've been a volunteer every year I've been here during the Forest Fair and I've thoroughly is the best way, the free beer tokens that think they'll make it.
Ew, see me. I'm gonna be, they're giving me a couple of those, hand out.
I saw your hand up, Jennifer. Was that? Do you have a question?
No, another accident. I'm going to get this figured out.
We'll get, we'll get the hang of Zoom and Teams eventually, won't we? Thank you. I see no more questions. So thanks and I look forward to the next update. And good luck with all the paperwork. Good luck to Karen with all the paperwork.
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
We'll move on to item number three, agenda item LUC 22, 2201-06, power to Bob Wallslot in the Goodwood Industrial Park. I do not see Bob on the call here. Do you have an update on this, Kyle?
I think he basically addressed it at your meeting just an hour ago with the municipal manager in the quarterly meeting, so that's the crowd he really wanted to get in front of. So I'll check with Bob, but I don't know if he'll come back, but I'll ask if he wants to return and talk about it next month.
Okay. I think we did get, we did get a little bit of an update. It might be worth just sharing what update we did get at the municipal, the municipality and GBOS joint meeting this afternoon. I think there is an intent at least for HLB to put out an RFP for somebody to develop the rest of the industrial park sometime this spring, although the details are not obviously confirmed. So I, hopefully that will, we will get closer to addressing a lot of the issues there.
Correct.
Okay, any questions or comments or thoughts on this? Okay, and we'll, we'll potentially see it come back to LUC or not before it comes back to us next month.
Correct.
Okay, well, thanks, Kyle. We'll move on to item number four, agenda item LUC 2201-07, Discussion of Assembly Redistricting or Reapportionment of Assembly Seats and Consider GVA Response. Thanks, Kyle.
So yes, oh yeah, the Assembly currently is going through a reappraisal, reapportionment process where they will be looking at redistricting basically the Assembly Seats according to the new census information that they have. And it's a item they do every 10 years where they review it and look at redrawing the maps. So at this point in time, they have started the the process of coming up with new district options. And the other aspect about this that makes it unique this round is that they're adding a new Assembly Seat so that downtown has two representatives instead of the standard one that they've had all along. So that, that changes it so that, that sort of opens up downtown becoming a bigger area. And so these new maps do show downtown expanding. And it probably has a lot to do with Jay Bear, with the military bases out there where they're going to expand into. So the most starking probably one for Gerwood would be this first map, map one, and it shows us being combined in with Eagle River area. So basically all of Turner and Arm and Eagle River would become District Two. And, and that would be a significant change for Gerwood. We would be lumped in with Eagle River, which is about 30,000 people over there. And most likely our district representatives would come out of Eagle River as that would probably be the strongest area for electing that, those representatives. So, so and the way they did these maps is that they did these maps to be proportionally separated out so that the populations that were being represented by the different districts were pretty much the same all across all the districts. And, and you can see that here in the population summaries that they have up here for each one. So but then as you go through the next ones, you'll see it goes back to more of a traditional district for us where we're maybe lumped in with the hillside and the ocean view area. As here in map two. Map three, the boundaries are different. Really where the boundaries are different is the Abbott Road cutoff and how they do those districts and how they move four and five around. Four and five, I have a lot of, a lot of difference in what they do. Same with one. So, so they really affect the boundaries of the southern portion and push, push people or push those districts around in different ways. So, so if you take time to look through these different maps, you'll see the different sort of alignments. And it's really, where do our Assembly Members come from? You know, it's mostly where the larger population center is for our district, which is either hillside or ocean view. South Anchorage usually dictates where those Assembly Members get elected out of. So, so they're looking for feedback and in here, it's a whole process which you can do for feedback. If you like to see bigger maps of these in person, we have them in the lobby here at the library and there's handouts there as well. So if you like to look at there, and then you can also go to the Assembly website and look under hot topics. You just click onto the Assembly main page and just scroll down and then you can access all these maps there, plus the GBOS meeting packet here has them as well. So so they're starting this process. This will not elect the upcoming election. This process will go beyond. It will probably be a whole summer process. It's very similar to what's going on at the state level right now. And so you will see this process sort of play out in the spring and the summer and probably into the fall before something is, is decided and options are brought forward for, for consideration. So that's where we stand. So I'll open up to any questions.
Thank you, Kyle. There are a couple of town hall meetings coming up, I believe, next week. Do you have the dates on the end of this document? I think there's a virtual and a physical meeting. Nope, it doesn't look as if they're included on here.
I, I don't have my hand up, but I have that document.
Okay.
January 26th and 27th are town halls at Lusak Library and online. And then January 28th is a committee meeting. And then the others are in February.
Right. So I don't think they'll be making a decision as soon as the 28th or even in the committee or a recommendation, but possibly. So we'll obviously discuss this formally next month. And if we have a resolution or anything else that will come out next month, this is an introduction. Guy? Please go ahead, Guy.
Sorry about that. Yeah, just to be clear, the map order doesn't distinguish kind of the order in which it may be chosen, right? They're just, they're just all different options with the same amount of weight.
Correct. Yeah, my understanding is these are just sample maps that none of them are necessarily going to be the final one. And I, there was the option for community, the community groups or member, individuals to submit suggested maps. That deadline has passed, but I'm sure they got several suggestions.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from from supervisors or public? Brianna, please go ahead.
Real quick, thanks, Kyle, for emphasizing that those maps are really life-size in the lobby of the community or the library. So head that way or tell our community members to go see those maps because it, it's much easier to view than on the screen. That's all.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any more comments, so we will move on. Again, we will discuss this formally with and decide if we're going to do any actual or formal comments next month. I'll move on to item four and a half or after four, which was just to start discussion about the HLB five-year plan. Actually, I think the formal title is Annual Work Program and Five-Year Management Plan. There was a redline version of it posted today, I believe. Or maybe yesterday, but it appeared over the weekend, so it's only just appeared. There is a lot of projects and quite a few updates about things happening in Goodwood. So I'd recommend we spend between now and next month looking at those and then have a full discussion about it next month. I think the link is at the top of the minutes as well today. Sorry, not minutes of the agenda.
There it is.
Yep. So I think this may be the, the So I think this may be the version without markup, and there was a link at the top with markup, maybe. I'm not sure which one I clicked on earlier today.
Oh, this one, yeah, there we go.
Obviously, this has quite significant impact on us as a community. It's our largest landowner. I'm not seeing any hands up. So we've introduced it now so we can discuss it, and new business, so we can discuss it in our next meeting. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Person's offering public comment, must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Anyone like to make a public comment? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone in the queue. If you're unable to raise your hand, just speak out. Okay, I'm not seeing any public comments, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. This is Brianna.
Thank you, Brianna. Second?
I'll second. This is Amanda.
Thank you. If we could, so 34 minutes, in fact, probably 30 minutes after we started, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for an efficient meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Thank you.